Seeing that it's 7:05 and we definitely have a forum, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Hi, how is it? Okay, Graham Rales, same as always. Don't talk unless you're acknowledged. If you would like to say something, just walk down in front of you to the mics. And I will call on you when this time. There is a two-minute timer on any conversations. So, we'll keep the timer on you and let you know. We do have our brand-new, awesome Lennox phone clickers. So let's try those out. Easy. Green, yes, is the one that's green and yes. So if you want to vote yes, it's that one. Red, no. No. So, our question today is, tonight is a nice night for a town meeting. If you think so, hit yes. If you disagree, hit no. Fifteen seconds you get. We have the clock down here. There's not a clock on there anymore.
She'll say, "Okay, the little windows."
Okay, and that is time. Well, a few people don't think so, but mostly I think it's a good night for a town meeting. Alright. With that, let's get everything going. I think I've wasted enough time. We got most of the people inside. There was still a little line when I was going there, but first I'm gonna get... They have to say some viewer. Oh, don't forget, when you do get up, the mic, please identify yourself and your address. If you are out of town, we will have to get at least ten people to acknowledge you that they want you to speak. Just let us know and we'll do that.
Thank you, John. Good evening, everybody. Everybody hearing?
No.
Gotta get closer, Dan.
I'll do my Jack Jones imitation for you, or Tom Jones, whatever your choice is. We can use the clickers. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out in this blustery evening. We're gonna try to keep things moving for you tonight. Just a quick overview first, and then a couple of announcements. Warrant overview tonight.
You should introduce yourself, though.
Well, good evening. I'm Jay Green. I am your town manager. That's before then, not after. That's good. Articles two through seven tonight, prompted by the need to have town meeting action early. Otherwise, we'd wait for May, but for some of the timing purposes in some of those articles, we have the available funding. And by doing that tonight, we can kind of move those projects ahead. So that's why we're asking you to take votes on those items tonight. Article eight is the annual request to transfer funds from the Affordable Housing Trust. You've seen that before. And Article nine is our only general bylaw this evening. That's on the short-term rentals. And then Articles ten and eleven will be presented by Planning Board Chair Tom Dalasco. And those are our zoning bylaw changes. So that's all that's in front of you tonight. In terms of any article that requires funding, the funding source is the same for all articles this evening. And that is our free cash certified by the Department of Revenue, thanks to Anna Osborne, who's here tonight, our town accountant, who got that, all that paperwork in. So by Anna doing all that paperwork, closing out those books, we actually have what we know to be our free cash so we can actually start doing some positive things a little earlier. So with that, we had a very strong performance this year. We'll talk more about that in May. But for tonight's purposes, we have a balance of 5.5 million. That's a great number. So tonight, depending upon how you vote, that's exactly where those funds will come from. Every article is that way. Also, probably the most important announcement tonight is please give a round of applause in anticipation of the retirement of our longstanding town clerk, Ms. Carrie Sullivan. This week has been so busy that we were sitting down preparing for tonight. We've been preparing for the public safety complex. Lindsay Patton, our HR director, said, "This is Carrie's last town meeting. We should say something." So, we caught that. So Carrie, thank you for everything that you've done, particularly in the last ten months that I've been here. And as we... Carrie's kind of been looking for an assistant town clerk for a while, so in her last two months, that wish came true with her successor, who I'd actually like to introduce to you now as our current assistant town clerk for two months, and then taking over for Carrie. Please welcome Mr. Paul Manning. Of course, with us, we have members of our select board this evening who we know. Mary Beth can't be with us. She's traveling. And Attorney Jeff Blake, who's her town council. So thank you, Jeff, for being with us. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Max, who's got a few announcements, and he'll kick it off.
Good evening, everyone. Max Scherf, AD Pine Knoll. I don't have much for announcements. The big one is the open house for the new public safety complex that we've all been watching get built. That is going to be on Saturday at noon. There's also a chance to meet our new police chief, Mark Smith, who will be on hand. So step up, shake his hand. He's a great guy. We're excited to have him on board. And at 2:00 PM at the same location, Amy LaFaye from the library will be doing a presentation on the first two fire chiefs for Lennox, so that is certainly not to be missed. The only other thing I would mention is that we certainly appreciate everyone that volunteers their time on town committees. There are always openings. If you are interested in serving the town, please reach out to Jay, and we'll be happy to find a good spot for you. And with that, I think we can get into the articles. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to waive the reading of the warrant and return of service thereof, and to authorize the moderator pursuant to MGL Chapter 19, Section 15, to declare a two-thirds vote on voice votes if he deems it so. All in favor?
No, that's not your job. So that's, this is just where you allow me to call voice votes, two-thirds. What we do at the beginning of every meeting. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, Carrie's.
Good evening. My name's Ed Lane, 101 Crystal Street, and also a member of the Lennox Select Board. Well, Mr. Moderator, Article two. I move that the town vote to authorize a select board, A, to acquire by purchase a fee simple interest in property located off Woolsey Road, Lennox, containing ten acres, more or less, identified by the assessors as parcel 22-3-0, and being the premises described and indeed recorded with the Berkshire Middle Registry of Deeds, Book 525, Page 337, for open space conservation and passive recreation purposes, to be a portion of Kennedy Park. And that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of funding said acquisition and cost incidental or related thereto. And to authorize the select board to grant a restriction on said parcel in compliance with General Law Chapter 44B, Section 12A. And further, to authorize the select board to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments on behalf of the town that may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate said acquisition or take any other action in relation thereto.
Explanation.
So here's the explanation. I'll give a little bit of history on the park and how we got to here. Kennedy Park, it's built on the site of the famous Astrowall Hotel. And after the hotel burned in 1931, the property was eventually sold off. Through the efforts of a local resident, John Drummond Kennedy, the town purchased a large tract of land in 1956 to use as a park. Since that time, the park has been a gem. Enjoyed as a beautiful piece of open-space land, enjoyed by locals and visitors alike, with other parcels being added from time to time. So in the 1940s, ten acres of land was purchased by a man named Stephen Smith. Nothing has ever been done on the land by the Smith family, which sits in the midst of the park, and actually has parts of the park's trail system built on it. Kennedy Park Commission has been trying to purchase the land since about 1993, but with no success. The Smith family now wants to sell. Price they're asking is a non-negotiable $250,000. The town, over the years, has tried to negotiate a price from an outright donation to the price that we landed on today. Our plan is to buy the land through the funds in the open space portion of the Community Preservation Act, essentially one of the main missions of the CPA. The tax rate will not be affected. If this article passes, you would be asked in the next article, Article three, to release the funds for the purchase.
Okay, we're voting on Article two. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
It passes.
Tom Dalasco, 12 Hillside Drive, Community Preservation Committee Chair. Article three, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year 2026 the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or to take any other action in relation thereto. From the Open Space Reserve Fund, $250,000 for the purchase of ten acres of land adjacent to Kennedy Park to be permanently protected as open space.
Is there a second?
Second.
Explanation.
The Community Preservation Committee received an out-of-cycle request from the town to consider funding the purchase of the previously described parcel of land. Because of its proximity to Kennedy Park, and the fact that part of the park's trail system traverses the parcel, the use of CPC open-space funds to purchase and protect the land are appropriate. The town, the committee met in July to discuss the application and voted to recommend the request to town meeting.
Okay, we're voting on Article three. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
It carries.
Greetings, everyone. Neil Maximilian, 117 Cliffwood Street. So, deep breath. This is gonna be a little different than what you've read here. And I'm gonna proceed with the motion that will, I will then clarify. Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone action on this article.
Explanation.
The purchase of the properties that you saw in the warrant was, as of yesterday, superseded by a competitive offer. We are no longer the competitive offer for the property. So, the seller has exercised their right to take a higher offer. And it's considerably higher, so we, as a select board, discussed that we did not think that we wanted to present this as a purchase appropriation request to you folks out there.
Okay, discussion? Okay, we are voting on the motion to indefinitely postpone this article. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
The vote carries.
Okay, the next article would have been Mary Beth's, but I'm gonna do it for her. This is, Mr. Moderator, Article five. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $65,000 from free cash, so-called, as certified on July 1st, 2025, for capital expenditures at the Lennox Library, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Second. Is there a second? Explanation.
Yes, this is a request for what is called a space utilization study at the library. We recently competed, completed a facility condition assessment of the library. That assessment was more oriented around HVAC efficiency, building code, structural deficiencies. This is a different study proposed by the library to focus on making better use of the space that they have and understanding things like what's needed for youth reading versus public space versus computer space. And it hasn't been done for a while. The result of the studies will all be presented to the permanent building committee and eventually the select board before actions after that are taken.
Okay, we're voting on Article five. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
It passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $304,000 from free cash, so-called, as certified on July 1st, 2025, for the purpose of funding a short-term interest payment on the bond anticipation note for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. And further, to transfer said appropriation to the wastewater enterprise fund, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Explanation.
So in order to fund the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, the town is required to borrow the cost of construction upfront using short-term loans, known as bond anticipation notes or bands. To manage costs and cash flow, the town is borrowing in increments over the duration of the project. We currently have a $10 million ban in place to fund work to date. The town is periodically paid, sorry, the town has to periodically pay the interest on the note. $304,000 is required to fund a short-term interest payment due in January 2026.
Okay, we're voting on Article six. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
Passes.
Dave Roach, Udonah Street Select.
Can't really hear you, Dave.
Okay, let's try it, try it this way.
There you go.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $29,000 from free cash, so-called, as certified on July 1st, 2025, for capital expenditures in the fire and rescue department, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Thanks. Explanation.
So all of you had an opportunity, I hope, to look at our new ambulance outside tonight. We're very lucky for the town Lennox to have that. What we're, what the, what the fire department and EMS are proposing is to spend $29,000 from free cash on our old ambulance to bring it up to snuff, so that we can have a backup ambulance for any number of reasons. It needs new suspension, and I could certainly attest to that because I've had a ride in it once or twice. So, we're looking for $29,000 in order to have a backup skidder ambulance.
Okay, we're voting on Article seven. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
Thank you.
Passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $49,102.83 from free cash, so-called, to the Lennox Affordable Housing Trust. And further, to provide for said appropriation, transfer said sum from available funds, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Explanation.
So the town applies a 6% excise tax on all local room occupancy, both short-term rentals and traditional lodging stays. In fiscal year 2025, this excise tax generated a little over $4.2 million. Of this total, $196,000 was generated from short-term rentals and the remainder from traditional lodging establishments. As we have annually, this article proposes to transfer from free cash, which is where the local lodging tax is accounted for, the equivalent of 25% of fiscal year 2025's short-term rental taxes to the town's Affordable Housing Trust. While difficult to quantify, the select board recognizes a nexus between the proliferation of short-term rentals and recent increases in the cost of residential housing. As such, the board feels that 25% is an appropriate amount to move into a fund whose purpose is to assist qualified future residents overcoming these escalating costs.
Okay, we're voting on Article eight. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
Article passes.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws so as to replace existing Chapter 28 with operations of short-term rentals with a new Chapter 28, operation of short-term rentals, as set in a handout at special town meeting in substantially the same form as discussed with the select board public hearing on October 8th, 2025, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Just a second.
Second.
Explanation.
I'll give a, just this part of the explanation, but the article has just some few basic changes in it. This is the brainchild of our land use director and town planner, Eamon Coughlin. So I'm gonna ask him to come up here and explain those changes.
So, this, thank you all tonight.
Introduce yourself, please. Introduce yourself.
My name is Eamon Coughlin, town planner for Lennox, your town planner. This bylaw requires a little bit of extra explanation, so I'll run through it as quickly as possible. So some, some of the basics of what a short, what is a short-term rental? Essentially, a short-term rental is an apartment, a house, a room, or a condominium that's up for rent for less than a period of 31 days, and where reservations are made in advance, usually through an online platform like Air VD or VRPO or something similar to that. Most importantly, a short-term rental is not what we think of as traditional lodging, be that a hotel, motel, inn, bed and breakfast, or similar establishment. So some basic facts about short-term rentals in Lennox. There are 170 short-term rentals. We know about those through Mass Department of Revenue, which collects taxes on each of those. That equates to about 7.5% of all housing units in the town of Lennox, and which is about 1/13 housing units is a short-term rental. So there are two basic bylaws that regulate short-term rentals in town. Those include our zoning bylaw, which sets limits on the number of days that a whole home can be short-term rented. And there's also a general bylaw, which we, which this article is proposing to replace in its entirety. The existing general bylaw requires a one-time registration with the town clerk. There are no, again, there are no proposed changes to the zoning bylaw tonight, just this general bylaw, Chapter 28. One challenge that we've had at town hall is simply knowing what short-term rentals are out there in the community. Unless somebody tells us that they are renting, we simply have no idea that a rental even exists. Our current general bylaw has resulted in less than half of short-term rentals being registered with the town. And because it's only a one-time registration, we don't know if someone stops renting or if ownership or contact information changes. The town also hopes to use RentalScape, an online system, that will allow short-term rental owners to register conveniently, without the need to, conveniently online, without the need to come into town hall to complete that registration process. The RentalScape system also allows us to identify existing short-term rentals by scanning online listings. So, this general bylaw was developed looking to attempt to balance the interests of the town, of short-term rental owners, and of neighbors, and those who have bought short-term rental properties. What does this short-term rental mean for, for owners? The proposed bylaw really boils down to three very, very simple requirements. What we would ask short-term rentals, short-term rental owners through this bylaw to do is three things. We would like them to register annually with the town, and the bylaw does allow the select board to set a registration fee. We would ask for the most basic of safety requirements, asking that a fire extinguisher be kept in every short-term rental. Fire extinguisher can be found at almost any hardware store for $50 or less. And then we would ask the owner to post some basic information inside each short-term rental unit. That would include the owner's or owner's contact information, as well as some basic reminders about existing town rules that we, that we have. We already have a leash law, we have trash storage laws. And we also have some, some requirements through zoning for short-term rentals that, for instance, that there be no amplified music, and that parking at short-term rentals be off-street in a driveway or garage. So again, just, you know, this bylaw boils down to those three very, very simple things for short-term rental owners to follow. Because there's been a lot of confusion around this topic, I want to reiterate what this proposed bylaw is not. There have been some very, some recent changes and updates to the state building code. Municipalities have no control over those requirements. And the state of Massachusetts, not this proposed bylaw, or the town of Lennox, is now requiring that short-term rental owners, or short-term rental rentals be inspected, and also that they, in most cases, have a sprinkler system installed. And that's about it.
Can you ask a question?
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, oh, 225 Main Street. I just wanted to clarify one thing I heard. So you're gonna use a program that scans any listings online to kind of catch people who may be using short-term rentals but you don't know about?
Yes, it identifies any rentals that are out there through online listings.
Including ones that you don't know about right now, maybe?
Well, right, if a new, if somebody starts renting, they may, if the system, that system would find them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are voting on Article nine. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
Vote carries.
Senator Tom Dalasco, 12 Hillside Drive, Planning Board Chair. Article 10. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by revising Section 6.1.12 fencing, as well as associated changes to Section 6.1.13 screening, as set out in a handout at special town meeting and in substantially the same form as discussed at the Planning Board public hearing held on October 14th, 2025, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Is there a second? Explanation.
For this presentation, please refer to your Article 10 Green handout. The planning board was asked recently by the zoning board of appeals to clarify the fencing section of the bylaw. A question came up regarding the height of fences along streetlines and whether fences beyond or outside the street line setback are limited to a height of four feet as well. The board reviewed this and determined that for safety reasons, primarily visibility, when entering the street and for the visibility of oncoming traffic, fences inside or outside the street line setbacks shall not be higher than four feet. The slide behind me and the handout illustrates the existing and proposed bylaw. The proposed change to Section 6.1.13 screening is intended to clarify that this bylaw section applies to non-residential screening only. No other changes to the text of this bylaw section are proposed. The slide behind me shows the handout, what the handout illustrates. The planning board's recommendation was to approve these changes.
Okay, this is a change to the zoning bylaw, so this will be, require a two-thirds vote. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay.
Nay.
The vote carries.
Article 11. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 9.2 accessory dwelling unit as set out in a handout at special town meeting and in substantially the same form as discussed- and in substantially the same form as discussed at the Planning Board Public Hearing held on October 14th, 2025, or take any action in relation thereto.
Second.
Explanation.
For this presentation, please refer to your Green Article 11 handout. The new accessory dwelling unit bylaw was presented and approved at the December 2024 Special Town Meeting, bringing the town into compliance with the Affordable Homes Act. After town meeting approval, the bylaw was sent to the Attorney General for, for final review and approval. The AG recommended that the planning board make some changes to the bylaw to be more consistent with state law. The changes presented this evening incorporate the Attorney General's recommendations. We've replaced the term "single-family dwelling" with the term "principal dwelling." We've removed the additional parking requirements in Section 9.2.3 general requirements. And then under Section 9.2.4 dimensional requirements, we've specified an exception to minimum lot size and clarified that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be converted to ADUs. We've removed reference, references to Section 5.3 and the requirement of proof of pre-existing non-conformant status. Under Section 9.2.5 special permit required, we've removed the special permit requirement for an ADU on a lot with a duplex. And the planning board also voted, uh, to move this, these recommendations to town meeting.
Okay, we are voting on Article 11. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. This is also two-thirds, it carries unanimously. All right. Thank you all for a great night. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, end the meeting. All right, everybody, have a great night. Thanks for coming to the town meeting.